Three days, but. Nah. Trial has it pretty much down.
Got it.
Read mock, anything good?
This is the standpipe?
Yeah.
Oh.
They're in there back at the.
Oh, cool.
Ironclad fight at the Civil War.
Go.
More say Regina's.
Like the construction of the ships.
Regina doesn't.
Fighting in the Navy boards and stuff.
Huh? Internal fighting?
And then like they burned the shipyard in Virginia and everyone had like.
That one person.
Bush of battle.
Up on these.
Be like Navy guys.
Kind of like modern day almost, right?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, cause.
Nothing changes, nothing changes.
These are the. Mainstays you already passed in. Sizzling. Did you?
Yeah, I like feeling.
I got this horrible.
Which can if you like.
Yeah.
We win it like a dryness.
How do you think I was doing a frickin mortgage or something?
Oh, you are? You didn't know?
I'm pretty sure. You're passing over the. Who's sick? He's this. Don't touch him.
I don't want to be.
I have my invisible barrier, don't even touch him. Wait a minute. We're just waiting for.
That's why I like it's not working for the world.
It's such an extensive area to get the world around.
Very good. I touched stuff that's.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to go there. We're done in DC, we're driving right by it.
You know, Mel says to me.
I don't think I want to walk around in the battlefield.
I'm like, because I came as well as I'm driving, I don't know what.
Beautiful.
The cover I put on his TV is degrading or something.
That's all set?
Yep.
Right, you're all good now, you hand all one out?
Get a, it's just like a soda.
And almost rocks.
Are we good?
Gotta do what you gotta do.
I don't have a gavel, but we'll actually start this meeting, would you please rise for the.
Let your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call please.
Counselor Garrison?
Present.
Counselor Bickford?
Present.
Counselor Pesky?
Present.
Counselor Ward?
Here.
Counselor LaRochelle?
Here.
Counselor Mason?
Here.
Counselor Lunt?
Here.
First item, please.
Public hearing, vitler license for Randall Smith doing business as Pinky D's.
I'd like to open that public hearing now for Pinky D's and Mr. Smith here. Would you like to make a brief, you're all good? That's perfect, there's no problem, so it, open that public hearing if anybody has any questions or any concerns about the license for Pinky D's. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. Next item, please.
Audience participation, at this time, those in the audience who wish to address the council may come forward to address items or issues that are on the agenda for this meeting. Please use the microphone at the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, we're owed open audience participation.
Larry Fillmore from Lisbon. What to do with seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-eight cents? The community received in forfeiture funds for the US Treasury. These funds were turned over to the town because our police department did their jobs, nothing more. As Chief Brooks indicated, the federal government took old, took control of this case immediately. Now the town council has three options. To utilize these funds as the council sees fit. To give these funds to the police department to use as they see fit. To give these funds to the police department in return for seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-eight cents of tax dollars, which was approved by the council for such things as purchase of two cruisers at forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty. So let's review the options, option one is by far the best option because it allows the council to take care of some urgent needs of the community, like repairing roads. Resolving the boiler issue at MTM Center before winter. Replacing more windows at the MTM Center before winter. Restore service on Thursday at the dump. Restore services that were cut at the library. These suggestions are not ranked by priority, but are excellent opportunities where this seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-eight cents would benefit the whole community. I'm sure the council cannot come up with others. Option two is by far the worst. The council approved the budget for the police department at one point two million dollars. This is over a million dollars to cover operation of the police department. This is a small community with many residents on fixed income. I dare say that the police department is the most costly per capita in the state of Maine. Option three is a viable option. According to Chief Brooks, the correct protocol is to provide forfeiture funds to the police department to utilize for such things as vehicles. Since the taxpayers have already budgeted for vehicles with tax dollars. These tax dollars should be returned to the community and Chief Brooks can use the forfeiture funds to cover whatever he wants. The taxpayer should not have to pay twice for whatever Chief Brooks wants to spend, this seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-eight cents. The taxpayers should be reimbursed their tax dollars to be spent for other things as outlined in option one. This is an excellent opportunity to see if Chief Brooks is a team player and will put the needs of the community of his, ahead of his needs. It's all about the community come first in this town and does, and that goes for the council too. This community has a lot of needs that this seventy-one thousand would eliminate or at least reduce greatly. So now it's up to the council to see if they're going to use this windfall for the good of the community or the good of Chief Brooks. Citizens need to watch to see how each counselor votes on this issue. Tonight, the council's going to vote on the fuel contract. The bid did not close until two o'clock today. This is how the town manager does business, he jams it down the throats of the council. The people have a right.
Larry, just give me your time's up.
Thank you.
Anybody else for audience participation?
Dr. Fitzgerald, resident of Lisbon Falls. Yeah, I'm looking at the heating, I don't, I, did the town receive any bids for heating oil?
Yes, we did.
They weren't on the town's website?
We just got them today, closed today at two o'clock.
And you're already, no one has had a chance to see them before you accept a bid. I'm looking at the gallons used, I've got a big building on School Street, only heat the first floor plus hot water for two apartments and an office, and I use a little over a thousand gallons. And the Lisbon Fire Department building is considerably smaller than mine and they use sixteen hundred gallons and they've got new windows. My windows downstairs are old, except for my apartment, that's a lot of oil. The Lisbon Falls Fire Station, twenty-four hundred gallons for that building, I just, it's, it's amazing, I'm wondering why. And the MTM School Sen, School Street, MDM Center, seven thousand gallons, yes, some of that money might be well spent to finish the windows there and do something with that boiler to save a little bit of money. You're smiling, but it's true.
Yes, good evening, Debbie Berry. I have three issues, first one is the mill issue again. That I did some research from the lady that showed up at the September tenth meeting at the Lisbon Community School, she referred to that she did work at the Corinna Mill. For your information, if you do your research and Google Corinna Mill, that mill still has not been released to the public for their use after ten years. It is still going through EPA cleanup, over twenty, I'm sorry, over fifty million dollars has been spent with no end in sight. The other issue on the brown water grant, brownfield grants, is that if a mill has been in a fire, it is not eligible for those grants. Number two.
Debbie, does, does any of this actually pertain to tonight's agenda, do you have any of your three items that pertain to tonight's agenda? Strictly the rules basically state that everything needs to pertain to the items that are on tonight's agenda?
They are on the agenda.
I didn't see anything.
In the minutes of September seventeenth, which you have not approved.
You have not approved.
The mill is part of that agenda.
It's, it's part of, it's part of actually a, a, yeah, consent agenda, it's, if you actually have something tonight that's actually pertains to the items that we have coming up in front of us for orders of resolutions, be more unhappy to listen. But unless they are, we will probably ask you not to.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll stop with number three and then I'll reserve my time to give to Mr. Fillmore. Moxie Day Festival report that was listed on August twenty-sixth, is there an updated report of that available for the public? There were a lot and numerous errors, there were over fifty errors on that report and I'm willing to go over it with anyone that would like to listen to me on that. And if there's an updated report on that, thank you, my time for Mr. Fillmore.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak other than Mr. Fillmore? May I ask what it's pertaining, Mr. Fillmore?
Well, I'm gonna finish about the bid tonight.
If you're gonna, if your purpose of getting up is just to actually mock what people do and, and actually talk about jamming stuff down people's throat, I'd rather you not speak because it really does no function.
That's not what I have to finish.
Well, that's where the direction you ended, so I think as if tonight will actually, will allow you to have your time, you had your time, you actually went over your time, so if there's no one else to speak tonight, we'll actually move beyond audience participation. Thank you, Larry.
The audience participation rules say that I have two five-minute sessions, that's in the rules.
Well, then why don't you go ahead, but I gotta tell you, if there's anything that you're gonna continue on as a motive that you ended last night, we'll stop you regardless of the amount of time.
That's fine, I apologize for that.
Because if you show no respect, we have no respect for you.
I understand that.
Thank you.
The people have a right to review all bids submitted before it's voted on. These items need to be ta, this item needs to be tabled until everyone has an opportunity to review the bids. Last thing I have is what possibly needs to be discussed behind closed doors with the water department. We've learned from four Campus Avenue and the rumbo, rumbo mill that all things discussed in executive session do not meet the criteria for executive session. These are too many, there are too many illegal executive sessions being conducted behind closed doors, thank you.
Anybody else for audience participation? Seeing none, we'll move to next item, please.
Audience participation response.
Actually, I think they're gonna be covered in the following items that we come up with, so we'll move on to the next item, please.
Okay, consent agenda. Any counselor wishing to have any item removed may do so now. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered next, seeing none. Order two thousand thirteen, one five four, to approve a vitler's license for Randall Smith doing business as Pinky D's in the minutes of September seventeenth, two thousand thirteen.
Make a motion to accept.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Order passed.
Next item, please.
Is council orders, resolutions and ordinances, order two thousand thirteen, one five five, fuel bids.
We put out a request to eleven vendors to provide us with bids based on the gallons of fuel that we use, which would be regular heating oil, kerosene and propane. We received, we, one bid, two bids came back, undeliverable, one of those big companies was out of business. Down East Energy was the one bidder. The prices are actually less than last year's except for propane. So we're getting a little bit better deal than we did last year. I recommend that you choose the fixed option.
And recommend a motion so we can move to discussion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And the motion is to accept the bid as the recommended for the Downies. And I'll open that for discussion. Any discussion on council for, for the, the bid process or the bid that came in?
Yeah, Steve, is there any reason why in your estimation we didn't receive any other bids, it's just no one wants to bid on it or?
We have had one other company show up to bid and it's almost six times I've done it since I've been here. I, I couldn't tell you why they don't show up.
So this is not unusual?
This is not unusual, no.
Is this contract, Steve? I don't have last year's contract in front of me, but is this the same, the same as last year's?
We put in a number of gallons we expect to use and if we use that up, then we continue to pay the regular price, if we don't, we still have to pay for the gallons that we didn't use. It's because they're reserving those just for us.
Would it be beneficial for us to try to send out again in that like, and see if we can get anything else back? Is there any sort of rush behind it or?
Well, behind, usually they, they will only hold the, this dollar amount for X number of days or hours.
Actually, it's a day typically.
Twenty-four hours. Then she'll have to, because she has to go back out or they will to see what they can buy it for again. As you get closer to the heating system season, the price probably will go up.
And any other discussion, one of the things that typically I see as, as I've been on the council is, is fuel bids is one of the bids that are kind of unique, that has to be presented the day of the bid. And if we wait till tomorrow, the bid is no longer active. And I actually locked in before this point in my own business because the prices are actually pretty volatile right now and they're changing quite a bit. And with the stuff happening around the world in the US right now, I can't imagine it's actually gonna go down at this point in time, so. Is there any other discussion on the bid, I mean, this is a contract person that we have been using for quite some time, a local contractor.
I think in the future, we do need to be more aggressive about trying to find other potential suppliers, even if we have to go a little further field and try to see if there's anybody else to be willing to bid on it because, I mean, I'm just not really that comfortable with having only one bidder year after year, if nobody else, you know, is there a reason people aren't bidding, let's contact them and find out.
Certainly find out why they're not bidding.
I'd like, you know, even if it takes a phone call to say, why aren't you bidding, if it's because we just don't think we can beat their price or we're not delivering that area, it's not worth it, then let's know that.
One of the, one of the discussions that came up last year, that during one of the facility meetings was the idea that since the town is actually switching to natural gas, it actually takes a lot of the, the bulk delivery out of some of the people, so some of the vendors that we used to use them in the forest, the, the amounts of oil is, it keeps dropping, so it actually makes the, the contract look less and less, nice to bid on.
Lucid, right?
Yeah, lucrative, exactly, yep. Which is a good thing because natural gas definitely is dropping the cost. Any other discussion prior to a vote? We actually had a first and a second to actually approve the bid that Steve actually brought forward from Down East Energy, were we able to actually get connection with the school?
Yes, we did.
And?
And all, all the school uses is propane, so they'll just purchase that through us.
Through us, and so this bidding was done in conjunction with the school.
With the school, yes.
All those in favor?
Order passed, seven zero.
Next item, please.
Order two thousand thirteen, one five six, agency liquor store relocation.
You should have in your package, I think there's three. Who are relocating and they're required to give approval from the council to relocate. Bootleggers is one.
Thirty at one time, it's amazing.
Food City and Rite Aid. One is for upcoming agency liquor stores.
Order one fifty-six is one agency store relocation and one fifty-seven is three new agency stores.
So we actually would do the first one first, which would actually be the relocation.
And that's.
Relocation is just bootleggers.
Just bootleggers.
Moving over to across from the Gulf Station.
Yep, I didn't entertain a motion so we can move forward with discussion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, prior to voting, is there any discussion, pretty much I believe what this is, is they're moving across the street, they're moving into the old TNA or the, or the, Napa, or how long you want to go back, it's been quite a few different things, but moving across the street. Is any other discussions or any concerns? I assume this actually all has to meet criteria, state criteria, code enforcement and then that's all been worked through.
Yep.
I have a question, I, I noticed, just looking forward at the next order briefly, that we have an, one liquor store relocation at the old Napa building and then a new one, is that the Lisbon Gulf that's across from that building that is asking for a new one? I mean, did, did both parties know that?
Actually, we, um. Actually, if you have some clarification, that'd be great, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Tony Rosetti, I own Bootleggers, so I'm here this evening to, if there was any questions, but, so we're looking to relocate physically relocate the store. The, the second part of this, and the only reason I know is because the liquor inspector has been, I've been in constant contact with him, is they open, they're opening up an additional license for the Lisbon area and those are the stores I, I believe that are interested in, in getting one during the next review process. So, they're, they're not, they don't have a liquor license, not an agency liquor license right now.
They're actually looking at review?
They're looking at, right, right, they have to meet the criteria of the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
So this one I hand at this point in time is actually just a relocation, we actually added a, a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Order passed, seven zero.
Next item, please.
Order two thousand thirteen, one fifty-seven, new agency liquor stores, Food City, Lisbon Gulf and Rite Aid.
Entertaining motion so we can actually have discussion?
I'll second.
The motion on table is approved with the idea of the ordinance for the new agency liquor stores, Food City, Lisbon Gulf and Rite Aid. And again, Steve, have the, do you know if these have actually been looked at or are these still in the initial stages of?
This is the initial stage, it says here that they have to notify the municipal offices at least fifteen days prior to the final selection. So they're notifying you from what I'm reading here, that they are soliciting to become agency stores.
And from how I read this, it actually states that basically they, they may not even be accepted by state agency, right? This is basically just a preliminary assessment for the town to see if they qualify. Any other questions or discussions prior? All those in favor of this motion?
Order passed, seven zero.
So once they are approved, will they actually come back to us a second time?
I think they would have to. I'm not sure how the state law works on this, this is something.
Alrighty, thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Order two thousand thirteen, one fifty-eight, forfeiture.
Chief Brooks will address this.
Good evening. Forfeiture. Reporting to you regarding the recent federal forfeiture received by the police department. First of all, as indicated in the letter to you dated September nineteenth, and I assume all of you have a copy of that letter. This case remains an active investigation, therefore I cannot discuss it in detail with you here this evening.
Thank you.
I can tell you that the investigation originated with the Lisbon Police Department in two thousand ten. And due to its interstate jurisdictional issues and logistics, our department notified state and federal investigators. It then became a federal investigation. Lisbon Detective William Tapley remained very active in the investigation, working with both state and federal investigators, both in Maine and out of state. A very large sum of cash was seized in the course of the investigation and on September tenth of this year, I received a phone call from an Immigration Customs Enforcement agent, also known as ICE, informing me that the Lisbon Police Department would be receiving a forfeiture electronically to the town's account. I informed our finance director of this immediately and for her to keep check of the account regularly. Again, this was done by phone notification, no formal letter has been received to date. The ICE agent further informed me that the United States Attorney will hold a formal press conference on this case in the near future. So with that part being said, I would ask that the clerk, please notify the requestor of FOA number one thirty-four, Mr. Fillmore, that there is no document to copy. The forfeiture totaled seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-eight cents. This amount was ten percent under what would have normally been awarded due to the federally imposed sequestration, which has resulted in all equitable sharing payments be reduced by ten percent and retained by the federal agencies. Our share of the total forfeiture was four percent after the sequestration reduction of ten percent. I will leave it to you to do the math on what the total forfeiture amount was. I'd like to read some excerpts from the publication, US Department of Justice Criminal Division Asset Forfeiture and Money Laundering Section Equitable Sharing for Law Enforcement Agencies to State and Local Governments. I know some here, not probably in front of me, but some here will not like what they're going to hear. Equitable shared funds shall be used by law enforcement agencies for law enforcement purposes only. That's followed with a period. Permissible uses. Law enforcement investigations. Law enforcement training. Law enforcement and detention facilities. Law enforcement equipment. Law enforcement travel and transportation. Law enforcement awards and memorials. Drug and gang education and awareness programs. Matching funds and the list goes on. Another piece I would like to share with you is guide to the equitable sharing, increase and not replace. Sharing must be used to increase or supplement the resources of the receiving state or local law enforcement agency or any other ultimate recipient agency. Shared resources shall not be used, that's in bold. To replace or supplant the appropriated resources of the recipient. The recipient agency must benefit directly from the sharing. In determining whether supplantation has occurred, the Department of Justice will examine the law enforcement agency's budget as a whole and allow agencies to use equitable sharing funds for any permissible purposes as long as the shared funds increase the entire law enforcement budget. The Department of Justice may terminate sharing with law enforcement agencies that are not permitted by their governing authorities to benefit directly from equitable sharing. Example of improper supplantation. A police department receives one hundred thousand dollars in federal sharing money only to have its budget cut by one hundred thousand dollars by the city council. In this instance, the police department has received no direct benefit from equitable sharing whatsoever. Not my rules. What you've heard here this evening with options that were given to council on how to spend the money. Options one and three are direct violations of federal regulations. And that's what was recommended to you to follow. I'd like to give you history, a brief history of how we have expended forfeiture monies. There's been no forfeiture monies expended to date this fiscal year. Last fiscal year. We expended thirteen hundred dollars in forfeiture, forfeiture money on, on equipment to the Humvee, the Humvee. The Humvee was a vehicle that we received through government surplus at no cost of the town. Therefore, it is my position that it'll remain as no cost of the town in equipment that we put on that vehicle. Same with the box truck. That box truck was a nineteen ninety-nine vehicle that was obtained through federal surplus property. I obtained two grants for that vehicle. The vehicle is loaded with equipment that was purchased solely from those grants, and we will continue to use grant or federal forfeiture money for equipment and needs for that particular vehicle. The two thousand thirteen utility that was purchased last year, we had some equipment needs on that that we weren't anticipating because it was a brand-new vehicle, changing from the Crown Vic. It was a learning experience. Some of the equipment that was over and above what was not budgeted in the regular budget was purchased with federal forfeiture money. Last year, I used nearly two thousand dollars as a grant match in order to obtain two new radar units from the Bureau of Highway Safety and a grant program that they offered that required the municipality to come up with fifty percent match. Our fifty percent match was totally taken out of forfeiture money. The sidearm that I'm carrying this evening, last fiscal year, we replaced all sidearms of the regular officers on the department. The sidearms we were carrying were ten years old at the time. Federal forfeiture money, one hundred percent. Our canine last year had to go through a couple of surgeries. I don't know if you own a vet, but vet bills are expensive. I don't have vet bill money in the budget. That was paid for one hundred percent by federal forfeiture money. Our tasers were purchased last year, one hundred percent federal forfeiture money. In the future, we already have plans to replace our AEDs. Our AEDs are around eight years old. I'm not sure of that hundred percent, but they're older models. We are the only department left in town that has this particular model. Fire EMS and the school department have upgraded to a different model, of which we intend to match, so all town departments have the same model. That expense for those AEDs retail are fourteen hundred dollars apiece. I'll be getting them through state bid process. I'm looking to expend around four thousand dollars to upgrade our AEDs. That'll be one hundred percent forfeiture money. And also, I've been notified that there is another highway safety grant coming up this fall, which will allow us, hopefully, to purchase two new cruiser video systems, because our cruiser video systems currently that we have are antiques, and they're breaking down all the time. As a matter of fact, the two cruisers that we're changing over right now, I will not be putting the old systems into these new cruisers because they're that undependable. That is a fifty percent grant match through highway safety. When that comes about, our match will be forfeiture money. That's how we've used it. That's how we intend to continue to use it. We are not supplanting the budget because nothing that has been brought up to date was in the budget, and it's against the law to supplant the budget. I guess I'll open it to questions.
Any discussion from council?
Have you received the money yet, or is it still in limbo?
The money has been received electronically to the town account.
And just a review before we move on, Steve. Tonight, this was actually brought for us just as a notification to council, what the forfeiture is. And there's really not a whole lot to vote on tonight when it comes to this anyways. I mean, this is a regular procedure, one that's just brought forward for us to actually, if not, to give kudos to the idea that we're actually able to get this type of funding. There's not many departments around us that have the ability to actually have the manpower to actually make stuff like this happen. So, when it comes to grants and forfeiture money like this, it's actually, just kind of goes to show how good of a police department we have to be able to work with the federal state agencies, to be able to be, have the ability to get it. As time moves forward, if there is any substantial, you know, changes or anything that Chief needs to do, I'm sure it'd come before council again, to actually, before it was actually used or done, but most of the grants he talks about are the grants that are very public and that he usually brings forward to us to review prior. Any other discussion from council? More?
I think it's a great and awesome job to your team on the PD, another feather in your hat.
Thank you very much.
Kudos to them, and awesome job.
I didn't ask Detective Tapley to be here this evening. He was here when I was in here earlier. Yeah, he is. And tremendous amount of work, and it's, you folks don't understand the amount of work that it takes, and it's a shame because it's very frustrating for all the negative that comes down with all the exceptional work that is taking place within the department. I know when Councilor Mason first came on the board back in eighteen twelve, I brought her.
Remember, you're still older than me.
I brought her, she keeps reminding me of that. I brought her attention at that time, the amount of grant money that had been awarded to the department when she first came on the department as council, and she had no knowledge that it was, at that time, it was over a million dollars of grants that have come in over the past fifteen-plus years. And we still pursue grants when they're available, and I'll continue to do that, so. And it's nice to be able to have now, instead of going to the manager's office and saying, "I need two thousand or three thousand dollars for a match," we now have the ability to do grant matches for some time.
Chief, do you know how much that highway safety grant would be if it comes up?
It's going to be, this first one is going to be about twenty-four hundred dollars, I believe, our match.
I think Bill probably knew you'd put him on the spot, that's why he left.
There'll be plenty left.
He knew, he'd put him on the spot, he wasn't going to get up here.
So, at what point do we actually keep the balance, and they get four percent?
Well, the, there are rules on length of time, and the feds actually want you to spend the money as quickly as you can. However, if we, and they will do an annual audit as well, Department of Justice will do an annual audit. But from my understanding, if we can continue to tell them that we will use the money over time for capital expenses, not so much for personnel, we don't really want to put it towards, if you, example, if you put it towards personnel, if I came before you and said I wanted to hire another police officer, that federal money could only be used for one, I believe, one year's worth of salary, and then it has to roll directly into the town expense, similar to the grants.
Very much.
Exactly. So, equipment needs, capital needs are a much better way to go, and I'm sure some of you, over time, have noticed in the budgets that beyond cruisers, there's been no other capital requests from the police department, because I've been using forfeiture money.
Well, if there's no other questions from council, thank you very much, and appreciate the good work of you and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to clarify something to council and the audience. Chief Brooks came on the police department when I was in eighth grade, so.
That was in what, eighth?
No. It doesn't matter, he's still older than me, so.
There you go.
Thanks, Bill, for all your hard work, too. That's.
Thank you.
Awesome job. Thank you.
It's a lot of work.
It's scary, that type of money and stuff actually flows through our communities. It's.
I'm still doing math.
And for the record, the guide is fifty pages long on what's authorized and not authorized.
That's amazing. There's a lot of rules, and for good reason, because you would hate to think that Chief and his crew could be in Tahiti trying to actually spend the money, so. Next item, please.
Order two thousand thirteen, one fifty-nine, winter sand.
Ryan, do you want to address this? These were tabled at the last council meeting. You should have all the documentation in your bid packets. Ryan will address that.
Good evening. This is a repeat of the last meeting. We sent out RFPs to Carl Houston Excavating, Cop Excavating, Doobie Gravel, Premier Development, Patseer Trucking. We received three bids from Carl Houston Excavating, Doobie Gravel, and Premier Development. Carl Houston was five twenty-five a yard, Doobie Gravel was six dollars a yard, and Premier Development was four forty-nine a yard, and we're recommending purchasing the sand from Premier Development at four forty-nine a yard.
And as of the last time, we had a discussion about the idea of the process as far as for the evaluation of the sand, and all of them have met that criteria?
Correct. They've all presented passing statements analysis for the materials that they intend to sell us.
So, your recommendation is actually the low bid at four forty-nine from Premier?
Low bid, closest pit to the shop, all nine yards.
Entertainer motion?
I'll make that motion.
I second that motion.
And any discussions or questions for Ryan?
I do have a couple of questions. For the Premier Development test, it's on the back of, what one is this? Carl Houston's bid, and I don't see any stuff, anything filled in, like any sort of company that did the test, or?
Shaw Brothers was the company that did the test.
Is this the one you have? I don't have that. I don't have that.
I have the same one you have. I contacted the Premier Development to find out who it was from, and it was Shaw Brothers.
Alright, I just have a couple concerned with nothing being filled out on the bottom, nothing on the top, and the project is ETTI when it was bid by Premier, so I don't think this is filled out like it should be. All the other ones have very detailed companies with names and signatures, and this one does not.
Is that because, are these the same folks we used last year?
Yep.
How many years have we used them?
Last year was the first year.
Okay. Did we have any issues last year?
There was some questions when they first started hauling, and then they ended up taking it from a different location in their stockpile, and the material was fine. This year, the material is better than what was presented last year.
I think we should look at Carl Houston or Doobie Gravel, just because this is the second round with this, and it still isn't filled in. It's about thirteen hundred dollars more, but.
Any other discussions for Ryan on the motion, the second that was presented, or any of the other discussion? Other discussion from council? So, there has been a first and a second on the idea of taking low bid, which is a recommendation of the town engineer. I guess we'll actually bring it to vote. All of us in favor of taking a low bid from Premier for the amount listed? All of us in favor? All of us opposed?
Order passed, five two.
Ryan, when will you start hauling that, is that Phil?
Thursday.
Thursday.
I think this is a good time to make sure that, you know, this is a good example of making sure that the Is are dotted and the Ts are crossed for next year on this, so that we don't run into this again. And that wasn't anything to do with you.
Some of this is on the contractor.
Exactly, exactly. So, I, I mean, I would just suggest that they know that they were not a shoo-in, and, you know, even though I voted to accept this, I completely understand and hear Councilor Pesky's concerns, and so I think we should make sure we pass it on to that contractor.
I do.
Ryan, I've got the same concerns. Next year, if it's a screw-up, it ain't going to get my vote.
I assume that is, one of the reasons this is actually a low bid is actually it's limited amount of sand, and if possible, by next year, it may not even be an option. I would, I'd only.
Correct. We didn't anticipate being an option this year.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. Next item, please.
Is other business, Andrus Goggin River Trail update?
Ryan, why are you there?
Yeah, I guess that's why we had to do it, huh? I guess to just bring everybody up to speed, as you all may or may not remember, because it's been so long. The Andrus Goggin River Trail was a project that we applied for and were awarded, and went into an agreement with the DOT to locally administer the project back in January of two thousand ten. Since that time, it's gone through preliminary design, railroad crossing hearings, and ultimate approvals, environmental permitting, which lasted for a better part of a year and a half, and finally received our approvals to finish with the final design, and ultimately put the project out to bid in January of this year. So, just about three years from when we started to when we got to the point where we were ready to work through the right-of-way process with the abutters. That was finalized in April-ish, and the project was finally advertised the end of May. We received four bids. We received quite a bit of interest during the bidding process, but we received four bids, and St. Lauren &amp; Sons of Lewiston was the low bidder, and we entered into an agreement. DOT allowed us to enter an agreement with St. Lauren &amp; Son, and we had our first preconstruction meeting last week. The intention at this point, and I'm not going to, I'm going to throw out some dates, but they're by no means carved in stone at this point, but the tentative schedule was for them to start in the middle of October, and depending on how the winter goes and the weather and whatnot, they intend to work through most of the winter. Again, their tentative schedule was to probably shut down sometime in February, but I'm not sure if we've made it to February, if they'll just keep going or not, but been working with Tracy, the economic development, to plan a groundbreaking ceremony, and putting together a list of people from way back, from when the trail project originally started, or the concept back in the late nineties. And it'd be nice to finally get this project underway and get it wrapped up next year. The specifications require the project to be complete by the end of June, so they've got to, basically, this winter and spring to build the whole thing. And it'll be ninety-nine, I believe, was when the, ninety-nine or two thousand was when the first, or the original feasibility study for the trail system was developed and adopted, and it's been since that time, and this will be the final, final step for completion. It'll be fantastic for Lisbon. We get a lot of compliments, comments, people that are coming just to walk the trail system that we have, and this is just, this is going to double it, so. Excited to finally see some dirt get moved. We're still waiting for that day to actually start, but it looks like the middle of October is what I'll leave it at, and everything's obviously subject to change at this point. But contractor on board, DOT on board, submittals being done, products being built as we speak, precast components, so we're excited to see some work get done. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Ryan on the trail? It's going to be pretty, pretty interesting to watch it progress, that's for sure.
You won't see much unless you get out there.
Yeah.
I just have a question, Ryan. I know that you tried to get some local contractors involved, and I just wondered through the whole process, were you able to talk any sense into whoever issues the grant to maybe consider that another time?
We've done it in the past. The issue they had with this project was, I think, primarily the size and scope, not only the actual physical scope, but the amount of money that was involved in the project. It has, it's also got me a little bit to the point where I don't know if I want to do another locally administered project after this one, because it's, this one's going to be very intense. It is, has full federal highway oversight as well as DOT oversight, so not only do we have us involved, we've got our construction administration inspection folks involved, but then federal highway and DOT are going to be scrutinizing this project as well. It's just, it's just another layer of, well, more people that are involved, which just takes, adds to the amount of time in some cases, but the whole point is to make sure that the money's being used appropriately, which we have every reason to use it appropriately since we inherit the project at the end of it, and we're ultimately responsible for its, you know, future upkeep, so. It'll, it's going to be an interesting project.
There's also a local person that actually has been appointed to actually overview it for the town, too, right, to oversee the project?
You're looking at him.
That's him, huh? You will be the one, right?
Yeah, it'll be myself and some staff from Public Works that'll be doing the day-to-day inspections in conjunction with Kleinfelders, who's an engineering firm that, it's actually, there's a bunch of retired DOT people that work there, so they're working with us to do the inspections, to make sure that all the documentation is in line, and that we don't have anything that becomes nonparticipating from the federal highway, and that's the, the federal highway folks are the biggest, because it's, I mean, DOT, and, not that we're picking sides, but DOT and us are trying to make sure that federal highway, you know, sends us all the money that they're supposed to send us, so.
And also, if everybody's all set, any other questions for Ryan? I would just like to thank the abutters, and that there was a lot that made this possible. It wasn't just the idea of local monies and federal monies, it was, it was the abutters that actually had to step up to the plate and actually work with their waterfront property, and Ms. Miller actually had to give quite a bit of property in the meantime to our. in the meantime to actually allow this project to work, as she has in that, on the mill, paper mill trail, so, uh, we thank those people because without it, it wouldn't happen, so.
Yeah, and we're hopeful that, like I said, we're trying to get together the groundbreaking ceremony and bring all those, I mean, the people that were involved with even the, the beginning, you know, the stuff that we've already built, the Rickers, the Millers will be the, they've, they've probably donated the most, in terms of the trail system, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, I'm excited to see it start going.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Is B, Town Manager's Report?
Just a quick brief for the public, the upper dam, uh, is, uh, Salmon Federation, Atlantic Salmon Federation finished that project, it looks very nice, they pulled all the debris from the broken dam out of the river and used that material to stabilize the bank, which had been washed out quite a bit. It has not changed the water level at all, and they actually were able to close the gate on the, the other dam, so hopefully it'll help in raising a little bit, but not too much. Uh, the audit, uh, has been completed, and hopefully, uh, our KO will be here, he's the first or second meeting of November to present, uh, that, which looks like it's pretty darn good. Uh, the town office will be closed on October eleventh, that's a Friday, uh, there'll be a massive painting job going on interior, so we'll close the office for the day, we'll make sure the public gets enough notification on that. Um, the, we have discussed, um, several changes for, uh, Finance Committee ordinance, as well as some charter changes. Uh, the Finance Committee, uh, would like to see that their membership go from five to seven, instead of having the alternates, and this is something we'll discuss in a workshop, uh, in the coming month, or this month. Uh, the other changes, uh, that have been asked to be addressed were, uh, the terms of, uh, office for the chairman of the, um, Town Council, Planning Board, and the Appeals Board. As it stands now, they're restricted to only serve two consecutive terms, uh, in some cases, it's been, uh, difficult to find people to wanna chair those committees, especially when we have chairs that are, uh, very effective and do a great job. So that will be another discussion, that will have to go before the public, the whole hearing process, so if you have other charter changes, the things that you have found that you'd like to discuss, be a good time to bring those up. Um, any questions on those? Those are scheduled for, uh, October and November, and the new councils coming on board will get a chance to participate in that, as well, get a quick education in how fun it is to read our charter. Um, on another note, um, the Water Department, I heard from their attorney today, Skelton Tainer and Abbott, um, and they had requested that, um, their bond term, which was voted on, uh, it was fifteen years, uh, the Water Department had requested twenty or thirty, um, and there was a mix-up, I guess, coming out of the legal office, and according to Skelton, Tainer, and Abbott, in order to do that, the council has to hold two consecutive meetings to invoke each time to change the term of, uh, from fifteen to twenty, and, uh, and then the following meeting, uh, which will be, uh, October fifteenth, you will hold another vote and vote on the warrant and, and change it, and you also have to give direction to the town clerk, uh, if you do decide to do that, um, to, uh, change the ballots, so the ballots reflected, it's a twenty-year bond versus a fifteen-year bond.
And just wanna bring that to discussion, there was, um, again, speaking with the, with the Water Department, it, it did make a lot of sense that, uh, that this bond be beyond fifteen years, a twenty-year bond would make a lot more sense to the community, it would actually lower the amount of, um, fire protection, um, percentage that we actually have to pay and, um, affect everybody's rates and taxes. Um, the pipe's not going anywhere, it's, it's gonna be in there for at least a hundred years, I would hope, and the tower itself will be wellstanding before, before, um, all of us are still around, I, I do believe, so, I mean, the idea of going to a twenty or thirty-year bond, um, I assume that the anticipation was more towards a twenty-year bond, Bill, or, or you were leaving it open for longer than that? Twenty-year? What I would like to do is, is there is some questions about the legalities of how this needs to go, that was actually the, um, um, the definition from the legal firm that actually does the bonds. Speaking with Steve today, there is some, uh, communication we want to have with our legal to make sure the process is done correctly. Um, tonight, what I'd like to do is I get a vote from council, and it'd be a tentative vote, and saying that if, if we are able to actually change it to a twenty-year bond and have time within the timeframe of the, the November fifth election, that, um, we actually give direction to move in that, that manner. I mean, there's something we'd have to vote on, this vote would count as one of the votes that, that would be counting as the two votes prior to the election. Um, I think it makes sense, I mean, I, I, the fifteen years, it's, it's none of a short term, we're not buying a truck or, or replacing hydrant, we're actually talking about stuff that's gonna be in the ground and standing for well over a hundred years, so. Um, I entertain a motion to, actually to, uh, give direction to the town to extend that the, um, bond term from fifteen to twenty years, and, um, we'll leave it as, as an open statement like that, so just in case there is some different, um, timeframes, we'll have to kinda work with them as we go.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Any other discussion on this at all, I mean?
Since the language is up to twenty years, is there any reason to change it to thirty? So they're covered, just in case they find a better deal that takes them out to thirty. So we're, I mean, if we're gonna go through the whole motion to change in it.
So pretty much what you'd wanna do is actually amend this motion to actually make it up to thirty, up to thirty.
Give them the option, if they get a better deal for thirty years, then.
Ken?
Ken Wells, Lisbon Water Department. Our original plan was to go to twenty, but the email I got from, that went in back between the town lawyers and our lawyers, they had changed ours to match yours, and then you increased yours.
Yeah. Understood.
That's where all this came about, 'cause we originally wanted a twenty-year bond, so we're not looking for anything more than that, so twenty years would do it for us.
So it would lead the motion to stand.
I'm not as long as they're not gonna come back and say they want thirty tomorrow.
I gotcha. You didn't get your drink, so you're not gonna go beyond that anyways.
Watch it.
So what this would do is, it's not only gonna lower the amount of money, um, tax-wise, that we'll be paying, but it'll also reduce the amount of water bills going up, so, so two good things, just by changing it from fifteen to twenty.
It would extend it, and it's still not extending even to a fraction of what the overall lifetime expectancy of, of the product is. Any other questions for council at all? Again, this is an important vote to actually move forward with, with the recommendations from the legal that we can make this work. Um, the only other question will be is if the, the printing of the ballots of, of how we actually handle that, if there's a concern, if that's been done or not, but we'll have to kinda play that as we go, so. All those in favor?
Order pass, seven-zero.
What's that on your town answers? Okay. Next item, please.
Uh, appointments, there are none. Uh, Counselor Communications.
I'll open it up for Council Communications.
Just, I'll say it one more time, I'm really excited about the police department forfeiture. Excited to live in a community with a great group of, uh, law enforcement professionals and awesome job.
Anybody other, any councilors? Quite tonight, must be getting close to an election or something. The, um, couple things, um, I'm glad to see our government's still open today, and not shut down, which is kinda nice. Um, the, sat with the facilities meeting, um, with the school board and, and the members of the community that sit in the facilities committee. There will be a workshop, an upcoming workshop, I guess we're still kinda.
Twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth, um, possibly, I mean, we originally looked at twenty-first, I'm not sure how many.
Change it to twenty-eighth.
Um, pretty much what this workshop is, we actually, um, we have an opportunity to actually work on a project with the school system. It's kind of a performance project, meaning that, um, there are certain projects out there that, that groups come in, and what they actually do is if they actually can come in and find an efficiency in, in your town, whether it's one building or multiple buildings, if the efficiency that they find, they can guarantee will actually pay back the loan, um, there's a whole project built around it. So if you can do a million dollars' worth of updates within the town, between the school and, and the town, and there's a guaranteed on paper that million dollars will actually be, come back directly in savings every year, um, with this project, it's pretty kinda neat, because if they say you're gonna save a hundred thousand dollars a year, and the first year you only save eighty, they write you a check for the other twenty. It's actually, if the project goes through and is approved, it's a hundred percent guaranteed payback, um, which is really kinda unique. Um, one of the things that we realized going through the town, we showed our projects, which was MTM, it's a couple boilers in different areas, um, a solid, not a solid waste, but sewage plant, um, some of the other updates, and as a town alone, we did not have enough savings to actually generate a project of this means. The school has been going through, um, intense studies, um, they've done a lot of updates, and as of right now, the school doesn't have enough to actually put together a project to actually sustain itself, to have a guaranteed payback. Um, the firm that actually is looking at this is the same firm that actually does maintenance at the school, it's the same one we actually have on contract maintaining our, our buildings, and they have actually looked at them, and they feel pretty comfortable looking at all our buildings that between the town and the school together, we actually have enough to actually, um, meet the performance necessary to, to write one of these, um, projects, which is really exciting, because just think that if we can actually have a, a million dollars worth of upgrades to make our town more efficient, and there's a guaranteed, a guarantee that actually those efficiencies will pay back the loan without a dollar out of the town, is, is pretty exciting. Um, it is unique, too, it's the first time the town and school has actually got together and worked on a project together. Um, you know, as we sat through the project, it's, it's, um, the, this school definitely will benefit, how would I say that, and I wanna be politically correct, the school is not gonna benefit more, but the school is actually gonna have a bigger part of this project. Um, and some of the people, the committee was concerned that the town side would be concerned that the school was actually getting the bulk of the benefit. And, um, during discussions, we all realized, it doesn't really make a difference, it all comes from the same pocket. I mean, they're the same people that pay for the town side, pay for the school side, it's, we actually really have to get beyond the idea of, um, them versus us, um, or, you know, the school side or the town side, uh, the taxpayers actually do actually take care of the whole project either way, so. I mean, it was pretty exciting, we're gonna have a workshop, the gentlemen are gonna come in and speak to us on the project. Pretty much what the project actually goes is, um, um, the Town Council actually is presenting a project, we actually have to vote to move it forward to a, for a step, so does the school board. Um, at that point in time, we were actually put out a, um, a, it's, it's kind of, kind of, um, different type of bit, process, we actually put out a, a, a bid for qualifications, meaning that we actually put out there for, at least, we gotta find at least three groups out there that actually can come in and have the qualifications to do the proper assessment, and then guarantees for efficiencies. Um, as a town and school, we would actually pick one of the firms, at that point in time, they would actually have, I believe it's, um, a hundred and twenty days, roughly about three months to do a full assessment. After that, at the end of that assessment, they actually have to come forward with a written guarantee that there is a project and what the efficiencies will be, and efficiencies are broad, they're not just heat, it's actually lighting, um, controls, it's, it's, it's a wide scope, and they either come forward at the end of that and say, we do not have a project, we can't guarantee it, and at that point, we just kinda move on, 'cause if they don't find a project, we don't have to pay them. Um, if they do find a project, then, um, we actually could move forward and actually try to get it, uh, the funding to get it done. Um, and if, um, they find a project and we say no, then we're gonna pay them for doing the hundred and twenty days of assessment, but, again, this is, it sounds like a win-win, so the, the Town Council will be, um, um, part of a workshop with the school, when they go over and they talk about details. The town, the council's already actually had one, one, um, night where they came in and discussed the, the, the deficient, deficiencies of the MTM and what we need to fix it, and some of the other buildings, so, um, it's, to me, it's exciting, we just have a project that we can work on with the school. So I think that will be informed, I think it'll be a public, uh, public meeting, meaning that the idea of the public will be able to attend, um, it will be probably in a workshop setting, so the school board and the facilities, and the, um, Town Council actually will get the full, um, overlook of what this project will be and what it takes to move forward, but, again, efficiencies are the key, and if we can actually do this, it's, it's, it's kinda unique, and, um, the examples they have are, are pretty amazing of what they've done in the past, so. Again, good things, it's just the idea of working together seems pretty exciting, so. The, um, one other thing that we're gonna have is, I believe it's next Monday, um, is gonna be the meeting, Bill, for the, um, the, the, the group that we have together looking at the water department and the, um, utilities, is that, was there a date, Roger, that you had actually said?
That was the seventh.
Was it the seventh? That wasn't set that, okay, you won't be around? All right, good, when it will, I didn't have it definitely written down, I figured it'd be a good clarification for tonight, so that, we'll actually post that when that's gonna happen next. Yep, well, you wanna address that as well?
On October eighth, which is next Tuesday, the, uh, one ninety-six master plan, uh, steering committee will meet along with the planning board, members and council, if you can attend, they're looking at a final draft of, of, uh, that, so you'll be going through that with Amanda, um, on the eighth, and that's here, or are we gonna do that at the school?
I thought I seen the, I thought I seen the school in one of the, one of the.
Okay. I'm not sure if I was.
We'll have that posted on the site.
Yeah, we'll have that posted on the site, um, so that'll be kinda exciting to see what she has to go move forward on.
Any other communications from council? Seeing none, we'll move to next item, please.
Executive session, order two thousand thirteen, one sixty, to go into executive session per one MRSA, section four oh five, six A, personnel matter, EMA director.
Make the motion to go into executive session.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Will there be a vote when we? No, there will be no vote, not at the end of this session. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Are we gonna stay with you? Yep. The efficiencies? It's, I think it's actually, unless you act.